Rene, Eric, can you hear us?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Here you come, Norbert. Thank you, please. For the billions to life, United States of America. Pro call, please.
Mayor Proten, Senator Eric, Mayor Councilman Bowman,
Here.
Councilman Brown.
Here.
Councilman Woodland.
Here.
Councilman, Mayor Ashworth.
I'm here.
Okay, love you coming. Frankie Wilson.
Frankie Wilson, one, one, two, and one oh five, West El Paso Avenue. I just wanted to say thank you to Mayor Ashworth and Councilman Brown for coming to the Outdoor Recreation Water Shop a couple of weeks ago. It was really fantastic. Colorado has a sixty-two billion dollar outdoor recreation economy. I don't think Purple Creek really takes advantage of that. I think we should. And thank you to Connie Jodrell, too, and all the people at Parks and Rec, and of course, our marketing department for making that happen. And I hope that the council will support all the good stuff that has been planned and that's coming out of that meeting. It was really a good, exciting success. So thanks for coming.
Thank you, thanks.
Two minutes from last meeting of March fifteenth.
I moved it. We approved the minutes from the March fifteenth, twenty twenty-three regular meeting.
The second back.
Go please.
Councilman Brown.
Yes.
Councilman Bowman.
Yes.
Councilman Woodland.
Yes.
Mayor Proten, Senator Eric. Yes. Mayor Ashworth.
Yes.
The board said, very great.
Mayor, the only thing I have is I want to ask Carol to come up and address the council's side. That's all I have.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Carol Stotts, HR Director, here with the city of Purple Creek. And while all of you at the day as may know, Deb Hack, our custodial manager, has decided to retire. So she's officially retired with the city of Purple Creek. Brings me great sadness. And if you guys know her, as I know you do, you know how mortified of the public that she is, but I didn't want to go without her being recognized for her years of service. So I'll be taking to her this plaque. And it says, "Thank you for your dedicated service to the city of Purple Creek, made in nineteen ninety-two, the March of twenty twenty-three." So again, just really want to recognize and thank Deb for her service to the city. Thank you.
Senator Paul.
Evening, Council. Last week I was able to put out the report on the February gaming numbers and just wanted to publicly announce what a success we had in February due to the two weekends of the ICE Festival. Cripple Creek's HGP grew by seven point eight percent over February. And in comparison, Black Hawk was down two tenths of a percent and Central City was down almost two percent. They did not have the events we did, so we can see the direct impact of the ICE Festival. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
Okay, new business. Consider approval resolution number twenty twenty-three dash two. Ratifying certificate of appropriateness for the exterior repair and renovation of the residence owned by Colleen and Kevin Burdell at one twenty-eight North Fourth Street, Cook Creek, Colorado. Rene is on the line.
Mayor, you're good.
Yeah, here, Rene.
I'm working on it. I've got a pretty small screen I'm working with here. Um, good evening, council. Uh, this is my staff report in regards to an application for a certificate of appropriateness from Queen and Kevin Burden at one twenty-eight North Fourth Street. If, I think there's a picture of the property, if we could show that real quick before I get into this, I'd appreciate that. It's about the fourth page on that. Okay, um, the top picture would be the east or the west side of the house that would be straight across almost from the alley and the car manor and Elks Club. I think that's right. Can't see it too good. Okay, I don't. Are we going to get that picture back up?
Yeah.
Thank you. That's much better. Well, um, while you're trying to get that up there, I'll just read this. Um, the request is for changes to their historic home at one twenty North Bennett Avenue. Normally, our ordinance, our historic ordinance does not require residents to request a certificate of appropriateness for changes to the exterior of their homes. However, these folks are coming before the HP Commission to request money from our historic grant, our historic preservation grant. So before we give out a grant, we make sure that the money is being spent for the right improvements. Um, the criteria that the, for this is that, number one, the submitted information regarding drawings, photos, architectural details, that they provide adequate documentation to access the criteria. And the HP Commission found that it, they had submitted enough information for us to act, assess it properly. For existing buildings, use, the use proposed requires minimal alteration to the exterior of the building, including the historic details, or acceptable compatible replacement where appropriate. The commission found that the proposal involves minor alterations to the exterior of the building and does not change the actual historic character of the residence, which is not an act, uh, whole history. Originally, that had a couple more stories on top of it. That's a stone foundation. Um, we could not find out what happened to the rest of the building. I don't know if it burnt down in the eighteen ninety-six fire, but anyway. The roof is not historic, however, it has been there for a pretty long time and it needs a roof in order to maintain it. So, um, the commission analysis was that the, um, a brief, well, their, the brief discussion about it and agreed that the submitted design met the historic design criteria of section three of the Development Code. And the commission notes that the proposed shutters are not historic. Um, we could not find really any samples of any other historic homes in Cripple Creek that had those kind of shutters. And they did believe, however, that they would improve the visual character of the house and be an improvement to the historic district. Uh, the historic, historic preservation commission voted unanimously to recommend, recommend approval for the roof replacement, the addition of historical half-round gutters and downspouts to repair the steps and install new railing and balusters um, in the design that they, that was approved in this project. And if the, if you can bring that picture up, it has that stuff in it. Um, we did not want to approve the, the shutters because they actually are not. We couldn't say that they really are historical. The shutters, um, could be put in at a later date if the Reddells wish to do so, they could do it with money. Um, we would not, they would have to wait five years once they receive a historic preservation grant, if they would receive one. And then after that, if they wanted to use their own money to add the, there would probably be nothing we could do about it, but, um, we are interested in seeing them fix the steps and the roof on that house. It's in pretty bad shape. So do you have the picture up there? I can see it.
It's there.
Yeah, there's, that's, okay, yeah, I just can't see it. It's not. I don't know. Maybe I can change this view. No, it looks like I'm not going to be able to see it from where I'm at. So, um, that's fine. The stairs are cement and they've got some stone and stuff in it. That's the original steps as far as we can tell. Um, the, the stairs are not up to code. Currently, they wish to put in a set of uh, balusters and railing and that would meet code and they did choose some that are in, I think that's on the next page, the different designs that they came up with for the um, type of balusters and railings and they, they would fit the, the historic character of the neighborhood and those approved by the HP Commission. Um, the shutters down in the left-hand corner are kind of a reddish color. And unfortunately, they don't really fit that well either with the, um, with the sizes of the windows. Normally, the, the shutters should be able to, if you were to close them, they should be able to cover the windows and what they have proposed does not do that. So um, we would like to approve the balusters, the railing and the roof and the, uh, half-round historic gutters and downspouts. Um, they've, we've presented you with a resolution number twenty twenty-three dash two that is requesting approval for certificate of appropriateness for all of those except for the shutters. Do you have any questions?
Good question. Oh, Renee, yes, I do. What is, uh, what's the estimated cost?
Well, um, it's way more than twenty-five thousand dollars and that's all we are allowed to give to any individual res, uh, property. The roof alone is over twenty thousand. So they, they got five or six bids and they were all really high. Um, they're going to have to pay for some of this themselves. Mainly, what we're doing today here is trying to get approval for historic preservation money. If, um, if they decide to move forward with one of these projects, they will need that in advance. So they've been working on this for a couple of months now, trying to get it approved ahead of the historic preservation meeting where they will request historic preservation grant money.
So Renee, uh, just a question. The, the house itself is, is not historical, but it's just in the historic district. Is that what you're saying?
No, it is a historic home. It was built in the eight, in the eighteen ninety. Um, it, it used to be, I mean, if, if you, I don't know if you know, if you know which house I'm talking about, but it's a stone foundation of a old historical building. At some point in history, the stories above that foundation were either removed or the building burnt down or something and the, the foundation remained. And it was turned into a house. Um, we can tell that by the roof, the types of, um, like the size of the lumber that's used on the roof. Uh, it was, it's probably about forty years old, the roof is. So it was put on a while ago. Um, the foundation is historic, but the rest of the house is not there. So that would be taken into consideration, too, when they ask for a grant for how much money we could probably throw their way.
I remember, uh, what was his name, the old host pastor? Yeah. So Renee, then they're requesting twenty thousand dollars.
Um, they haven't requested any amount of money yet. They're just asking permission for a certificate of appropriateness. The city council is the one that decides, um, whether or not you feel the historic preservation made the right decision. And then you would sign your resolution stating that it, these ideas that they have, that they would be okay to move forward with if we do give them any money. That will come for you when, uh, they finally get their application in for a grant.
Thank you. Any other question?
Yes, welcome for resolution twenty twenty-three dash two.
I'll go ahead and rule it. Um, we've got a correction to, as it's written. I make motion that we approve resolution number twenty twenty-three dash oh two. A resolution ratifying approval of a certificate of appropriateness to Colleen and Kevin Burdell for external home repairs and improvements at one twenty-eight North Fourth Street, including roof replacement and new gutters and repairs to the exterior staircase and a new baluster.
I will say.
So you're.
Go please.
I just want to ask, Missy, is what you did is left out of shutters?
We omitted the line, uh, and the addition of shutters.
Thank you. That shouldn't have been in there to begin with.
Councilman Woodland.
Yes.
Mayor Proten, Senator Eric.
Yes.
Councilman Bowman.
Yes.
Councilman Brown.
Yes.
Mayor Ashworth.
Yeah.
Item B. Consider approval of resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh three. Ratify certificate of appropriateness for new nineteen fifty's art deco signs for exterior Century Casino, one hundred and eighty, Bennett Avenue, Purple Creek, Colorado.
Uh, this is a request for a cert- uh, certificate of appropriateness for a new sign down there on Second and Bennett Avenue for the Century Casino. The criteria that was submitted, um, the commission found that they had submitted enough information for us to assess the sign property and did so. Um, for existing buildings, the use proposed requires minimal alteration to the exterior of the building, including the historic details or acceptable, uh, acceptable compatible replacements and that they are appropriate. Um, the sign was found to be too large, which, uh, the applicant is aware of. Um, it would require a variance due to the size of the proposed sign. A portion of the architectural details will no longer be visible. If you can show that. Um, this isn't exactly, uh, it, it doesn't show the correct perspective. It's a, it's just kind of pasted onto the front of the building. So you can't really tell that it isn't going to uh, cover up some of that stuff, like the, the, the windows won't be completely covered up and things like that. And we'll go into that later, but, um, there would be no replacement of any of the architecture on the building with the, the installation of the sign. Um, for additions, that the new construction be compatible but distinguishable from the historic structure and appropriate materials and placement thereof is proposed. Uh, there won't be any additions, so this does not apply. For new construction, the proposed architecture details, bulk size and site design characteristics are compatible and complementary to existing structures and the general surrounds. The sign happens to be too large. It'll require a size variance and that is a council decision. The HPC agreed that the design of this, uh, the design of nineteen fifty's art deco sign does not fit the period of significance. However, the applicant pointed out that there are other existing signs that are similar in design. So then this is the sign and that we're talking about. Um, the, the sign's too large. It'll require a size variance and that's a council decision, like I said. And what I did, because, um, the commission and the applicant spoke a lot about existing signs here in town on Bennett Avenue, uh, they wanted to compare the sign that they are requesting to some signs that are currently existing in town. Uh, these are pre-existing non-conforming signs and they are, what that is, is they're signs that were in place before codes for the signs were adopted by the Historic Preservation Ordinance in nineteen ninety-one dash three. And they do not meet current code. Uh, the HP ordinance adopted a period of significance when they put that ordinance into effect for design criteria. That period has been determined to be eighteen ninety-six to nineteen ten. If we go to the next page, I, I gave some examples that they brought up and, uh, of what signs they're comparing their sign to. Um, I don't know what she gave you here. This isn't what I was wanting on here. Do you have the one that has the? What this is, is actually Art Nouveau. Victorian or Art Nouveau is what is the correct period. And these are the types of signs that would be correct for that district. Um, did, did she give you the signs of the Elks Club and the Butte Theater and stuff?
Yeah, we have that in our packet.
You in the packet, but.
Okay. Okay. She gave you the wrong uh, thing. Okay, great. Well, um, if council can look at their packet, uh, the comparison was to the uh, Butte, the Elks Club. We gave a daytime and a nighttime shot of what that would look like. I also gave one of the Butte Theater. Um, the, uh, note that, well, you guys can't note in the audience, but with city council, I'd like you to note that these are site of photographs of the said signs, day and night appearances. The signs are dimly lit and the size does not detract from the architectural design of the eighteen ninety-six building architecture. All of the above signs are considered pre-existing non-conforming because they were installed before the Historic Preservation Ordinance passed or went into effect. That ordinance required that the design criteria. Sorry about that. She gave you the wrong thing. Um, the ordinance requires that the sign criteria for signs installed at the ordinance went into effect be period correct, meaning that they must fit the, within the period of significance, which is May eighteen ninety-six to December of nineteen ten. Um, it, that picture that you had of the, if you can find that again, you can put that up. Uh, the Century Casino, the corner view of the Century Casino. One more, one more. Couple more there. Um, the applicant agrees that the onings depicted here will be removed or replaced at a later date should they receive uh, approval for their sign. This is a rendering of the sign as it will look from the corner of Bennett Avenue and Second. The sign depicted here is overlaid onto an image of the building at an inaccurate scale. The applicants represented assured the commission that the tops of the canopies will not block the windows or cover the building's unique soldier course. This photograph does not depict the brightness of the sign as it will appear on the street. Though the applicant does state that the sign will automatically dim to meet the Development Code requirements after dark. Uh, that would be the code two point six point two. Examples of electronic signs and they're permitted after night brightness are the Double Eagle and Wildwood Casino signs. This would be considered a nineteen fifty's art deco sign. Art Deco, art deco was popular in the late twenties to nineteen sixties. The sign is, uh, at from the bottom to the top in the center, then is about fourteen feet tall, two hundred and forty square feet in total. This is a sign the applicant is comparing the existing non-conforming signs to. That would be the Butte Theater sign, the Palace Hotel and the Elks Club. Each of the six buildings owned by the, uh, Century Casino is twenty-five feet wide and hundred and twenty-five in length. Code allows no more than a hundred and fifty square feet for any one sign. And this one would require a size variance from city council. The two sign, side signs are electronic signs, uh, which code allows for in the B-zone, section two point six of the Development Code. And specific regulations in two point six two talk about foot candles, uh, brightness and that sort of thing. The city has approved two other electronic signs in the, one at the Golden Nugget, Wildwood. One at the Double Eagle. Note that it is not possible to tell how bright this sign will be because it is an, an overlay, not an actual picture of what this sign will look like when it is lit in the night sky. The next photo in your packet is a picture, uh, this is a Century Casino sign designed for another historic mining town in Central City. Note that the sign is less obtrusive and fits the size of the building. It's a Victorian style and it does not obstruct the style of the building, leaving historic architecture to remain in full view, also following the downlighting requirements, which work best on a Victorian sign. So, uh, HP Commission met and the HP Commission voted to approve this sign. However, I was, uh, present via Zoom and the equipment wasn't working properly and I was unable to, uh, speak to any of the comments that were being made, but I was present at the meeting. So I'm aware of what, kind of what went on, um, what, what I could hear anyway. Um, the apps, the staff recommends that HP Commission, the city staff disagrees, disagrees with the HP Commission. We, uh, I think we made a mistake on this. Um, I don't think that the sign should be approved. I, I basically recommend that the applicant submit a sign that is period correct. The applicant was advised to submit a period correct sign and declined to do so. Um, this was done via email with, uh, Maria Herschaw. And, um, the submitted design does not comply with the historic preservation. These are my reasons for um, saying I don't agree with the HP Commission's decision. Uh, the submitted design does not comply with the Historic Preservation Ordinance nineteen ninety-one dash three, which as signs, any new sign and any change in the appearance of any existing sign located on a landmark within the Bennett Avenue Historic District shall not be incongruous or mismatched or stand apart from, to the historic character of the district and shall comply with criteria and guidelines specified in the design guidelines. The photographic, photo- The photographic photographic catalog and with the city's. Sign ordinance. The historic character has been determined by ordinance. To be the period of significance, which is between May of nineteen eighty-six and December of nineteen ten. The applicant is proposing a signed design that is from the nineteen fifty's. Which is not within the period of significance. The hotel sign font is not period correct either. This would be as simple if the applicant was willing. Applicants requesting a certificate of appropriateness for design approval on a sign. In the B-zone or the Historic District are required by ordinance to match this historic character of the location. This design does not meet that criteria. New sign should be approved simply because the city already has similar signs. Signs being used as a comparison by the applicant and the commission. Are existing non-conforming. And the current ordinance does not apply to them in this case. However, ordinance nineteen ninety-one dash three B five does apply to new sign designs. Being approved for a certificate of appropriateness. The adoption of ordinance nineteen ninety-one B five indicates that going forward, new signs. Should meet design criteria. That the period of significance adopted for a certificate of appropriateness. The adoption of the ordinance nineteen ninety-one. Oh, I'm sorry, I might be reading. The adoption of the ordinance nineteen ninety-one dash three B five. Indicates that going forward, new signs should meet criteria and that the period of significance. Adopted is from May eighteen ninety-six to December nineteen ten. It allows for designs in Art Nouveau or Victorian styles. And that's what you saw in the pictures that Katie put up there. Earlier, there was an Art Nouveau and a, trying to show you a comparison, the. The Century Casino is a Victorian style brick building. And the corner of Third and Bennett, the Triple Crown Building, if you know what I'm talking about, is an Art Nouveau building. So those were both types of. Signs in that era and that were found in Cripple Creek during that time. So we had said that those those are the types of signs we're looking for. During the HP meeting on March ninth, the applicant. Eric Rose. And I would ask the council to not read from the. The papers you were given. Eric Rose was misquoted and. For some reason, she got the names mixed up too. Oh gosh, where's he at? Ian Sensnick, he is. Working with Da Vinci Signs and was a representative for the Century Casino at the time. When we were doing this meeting, anyway. They brought up themselves. Ian. Said to the commission that, and this is a quote now, I believe this is correct. We've seen a public bid for the Bronco Billy signs. That are gonna go up, that I'm sure they're gonna fight for, and you know they're pretty outlandish as well. Much more than ours, I would say. And a lot of the reason that Century Casino needs this is this sign. If you look across the street at the modern era, all the windows, all the bells and whistles, it's gonna draw the attention. I mean, Century Casino needs something to make them stand out. So that people can see that they are not just some hole in the wall that you actually want to go to, go there and. Commission interjected, spend money, and Eric replied, or Ian replied exactly. Yes. Pardon me? Oh, sure.
Renee, this Frank, I think you've gone over the information enough. I think Eric is. Eric would like to talk.
Okay, um, we won't go into that then. I just, the basic deal was we're. It expressed a concern that. We're not, I don't want to see another sign go up just because someone else is gonna do it too.
Thank you. Thank you, we're moving on.
Okay.
Eric, are you on?
I am on, excuse me, I am on, can you hear me okay?
Yeah, the floor.
Alright, thank you Frank. Thank you everyone, sorry, my apologies that I couldn't make it in person. Fortunately, I can't be two places at once. So I do appreciate you allowing me to zoom in. I won't take as much time. Again, we do understand that the sign is not nineteen ten. Specific, and that's why we're going through the process to. Get the sign approved. HP, obviously, the committee unanimously approved it. They liked the sign. There was. Very little, if any, negative comment, and obviously we hope that council will take their recommendation and. Approve the resolution tonight. Renee did clarify some of the misinformation through and in the packet, so I do appreciate that. That was not. A quote from me and and I did not have any. Discussions or anything with Renee or staff on the actual. Sign. But regardless of all that, I'll turn it over to Da Vinci and and they have some expert HP. I did want to go through just real quick. A couple of the photos that were presented in your packet. Obviously, we do have a better photo of the sign that was the original one that was taken. Hopefully Ian or someone from Da Vinci has that. To share with you. It is, it is misrepresented on the sign. It does not cover the windows. It's. Fits much better as Renee also agreed. The hotel entrance sign, agreed, easy. We need to change the font. We actually would went back and would probably change that to say Century Casino as well instead of hotel entrance, but. Certainly changing the font obviously is isn't easy for that side sign. I don't think there's any other issues with that sign. The Central City signage. Again, I I'm not sure if that's really relevant. There's different rules and codes. That is a back sign. There is a. Lit sign that is definitely not nineteen ten on the building as well. And as you know, each city is a little bit different, even though we follow the same rules. I don't think I need to. Show you any photos of Black Hawk and the signage that they have there. So I, we won't do that, but obviously, again, each city is a little bit different and can do what they. What they what they want. So again, besides all that, yes, we think the sign looks fantastic. We think people will appreciate the beauty of it. I don't know if you've been to. Downtown Chicago or other cities where you have a grand marquee sign that really. Sentuates the city and and the sign and the building. It's not gonna take away from historic and it's not gonna be. That that big. And again, obviously, with Chamonix going across the streets and being built. Yes, the historic. Preservation and character obviously is is quite a bit changed. So in addition to this sign matching other signs that are up. Regardless of when they were put up, certainly, again, it it has changed. We think this is, again, a significant sign and and has great character and and will will look absolutely fantastic. So I'm gonna turn it over, if you don't mind, to Da Vinci who are there and let them answer any questions you have on the sign. We also have another. Zoom participant, Tim, who's an expert on HP. As well, and they can go through that and answer any questions you have. And again, appreciate it and thanks for letting me zoom in.
Thanks Eric. My name's Eric Sinisak, I'm Vice President of Da Vinci Sign Systems. Thank you everybody for hearing us and being here tonight. Kind of wanted to start off on some of the pertinent things that, you know, go into putting a sign on a historical building. Personally, I've put a lot of them up. I've done a few of these variance meetings. Downtown Fort Collins, Cripple Creek, or not Cripple Creek. Up in Central City, Black Hawk, downtown Denver, so very aware of how they need to be attached. Not altering the building, all that good stuff. And can assure everybody that this one will be the same. There is already structure on the building on the corner. Where metal is coming out from an old blade sign that was there, so we would. Utilize those same mounting holes, not the structure, but the holes, and I believe they're already in the grout. And there's also a steel band around the building where, can you pull up the building, drawing? Where the decorative looks like flower pieces are. That's a whole steel band around there, so we can use that to anchor into with minimal damage to the building. We understand we would need to go into grout anywhere else. So it doesn't permanently alter the structure of the building at all. Doesn't impede or instruct any views of the historic structures. Other than, you know, the the spot where it's going, where there's already an awning that's blocking that currently. So those awnings will be removed, as well as all the Century Casino signs that are already up. Those will also be removed. There are plans to possibly put the awnings back up in the future, but that'll be a later discussion. Obviously, we heard that the, you know, the size is an issue a few different times, and we understand that. We understand, you know, we'd have to go to variance for that. And that, you know, there's plan Bs if needed for that. Let's see here, try not to stick up too much of everybody's time here. We did do a little more research into the Art Deco and the historic event. In France, actually, Art Deco came out in nineteen ten. I know that's a little bit before, you know, America did, but. So we did have smart deco signs out there. And then speaking to all the different signs around town, I mean, we have everything from, you know, new style. You know, fonts to fifties to sixties to Art Deco and, you know, beyond, so. Nothing really matches and I don't feel it's fair to to have Century, you know, be held to that exact standard. And that's also part of the reason we designed the sign the way we did, trying to, you know, keep the wagon wheel on top, keep the light bulbs, you know, consistent with that era. Where we can use those lights to, you know, keep that. New vote, look. The lights are all fully dimmable, so we can dim them to, you know, the lighting in the city or whatever nits we need to. And by pushing a button, everything's programmable electronically. I think that was all I had on that. I did want to have my business partner Brian come up. He had a couple more points. Again, we'll try to keep it short, but we do feel like, you know, with the. Bronco Billy's coming next door, beautiful building, beautiful place. We want to make sure Century Casino is seen too. And the the miss code, just real quick, was, we've seen the entrance of it and that bit. The grandiose entrance, the whole building, it wasn't necessarily, you know, to the signs, it's just. That huge thing with the glass walls and everything else, it's gonna draw attention. We wanted to do that for good. Excuse me, Century Casino as well. Thank you very much.
Evening Council, Mr. Mayor. I'll be brief and respectful of everyone's time here. Wanted to, thank you for welcoming me to your city. Definitely a beautiful place to. Stay and enjoy, so enjoying the time I spend here. Speaking a little bit more to the sign. Being as HPD has already approved the application for this CNOA. I wanted to speak to the separation of powers and the reason why the Historical District. Committee has the power to make that recommendation. Going through a veto process or any type of recommendation from council. As to why the Historical Preservation Society's recommendation is not appropriate defeats the purpose of. The Historic Preservation Department as a whole, in my opinion. I think that we should respect that the sign was approved as is. And I think that we should. Look into the fact that, you know, our company in the design process of this sign did try to incorporate as many. Period-specific elements, architectural elements of this sign, including bolts. And our goal was to bridge the gap from Art Nouveau Victorian. And as you know, there's there's many signs in Cripple Creek already in the Historic District that are out of compliance, and my grandfather did, and we understand that. So this piece we consider is more of a transitional piece. And we do think it has elements of Victorian. We do also agree that there are some Art Deco elements in there, but we think that this sign can bridge the gap. Which mean the historical signs in the Historic District and the contemporary signs as well. So I would like to argue that points. In addition, I will just second on some of the economic injustice of not committing. Century Casino to have a sign that is not only. Beautiful and boosts the historic appeal of the district itself. But also leads to fair competition within the city. As you know, Full House and Bronco Billy's building. A large grandiose structure. And Century Casinos bringing in as a whole over four hundred million dollars in revenue per year. If that business was to fail, I think we can all agree that gaming is a large part of the city and brings a lot of revenue to it. Tourist attraction and things of that nature. If this business was to fail, I think that could cause undue economic hardship. To the city and Historic Districts. With that, I think that this. Does not detract from the historic appeal of the building. It adds more to a cohesive book and bring in the whole downtown area together. And I'd like to respectfully request that. Council moves to approve our.
Yes, I have three things I'd like to say. First of all, your sign, the picture of the sign here. When you are saying, like, you look at the comparison of the signs, the neon signs that went up in the thirties, forties and fifties. That are still on some of the areas in the historic or in our. Historic District, which Century Casino is. I think you're comparing apples and oranges. They're neon signs, this is not neon. The the second thing is, the this. The center part of the sign, the Century Casino, you know, didn't look bad. As far as I'm concerned, it's what's hanging on to the bottom of it, the LED lights and so on and so forth. I think, in my opinion, it'll look terrible down there. In the sense that we already have one that is out, or two of them, that are out of the historic history. And they about blind you when you walk by. And the third point I wanted to make is fact that we know what the casino. Operators do. They try to outdo each other on signs. We allow this to go up, then the next casino wants one that's even bigger, brighter, then the next casino wants an even. We are in a Historic Preservation District, and I want to keep it that way.
I'm pretty much in agreement with Tom. When we brought gaming in and formed all our Historic Preservation Ordinances, they were done for a reason. We are in the National Historic District that was formed back in the nineteen fifty's. We're kind of proud of our heritage. And like Tom said, I don't want to get in a sign war. As it says in the packet, yes, Bronco Billy's is Vegas grandiose. They went through an extremely long, long. Process of special merit. And that is how that design was allowed. Eric, you know, I'd be willing to look at another design, but this one I just don't feel is appropriate. For the Historic Downtown Bennett Avenue District.
Can I just say something real quick then, Missy? Sorry, can you hear me? And first of all, Tom, the lights are dimmable, so they can be as dim. LED obviously is much more controllable than. Than a bulb light anyway, so as far as, you know, blinding anyone, I would disagree that that would ever be an issue. As far as design, yeah, sure, Missy, we can talk about different designs, but. Again, we, as was explained, we do think that this is a big. Bridge and gap and and fills everything and is not proportionally, and again, hopefully you can see the other picture of the sign is not. It's not too large. And moving forward, I think it is important for this. City to maybe allow some new signs and make sure that they're not. Too big and they're not, again, Vegas or even Black Hawk style, but this is not. So this this is the bridge, this is. This is growth. I mean, again, we're we're having a new casino and resort and this this. Again, I would just reconsider that it it actually fits in what Cripple Creek will, should look like and will look like in a few years.
We reconsidered the, it's important now, but now we're. Well, we reconsidered the, uh, some point down, but now we're, we're coming to a council decision here. So Bruce, do you have anything?
Um, I'd like to say, I, I think the sign looks great. It's a really cool looking sign, but it's, uh, historically correct. Uh, and comparing it to the signs, other signs in the city, these were signs that have been there for a long time. And they're there before our current city ordinances are in place. And, you know, we need to do this on a case by case scenario here and comparing it and talking about Broncos all the time. We don't even know what signs are even considering, I don't know right now, but, uh, and I'm sorry that there was a, a misconnection or misunderstanding between staff and, uh, the historic board. I don't know if it'd be a, a recommendation for those two to get together and figure this out and come to us to what, what they consider a recommendation to us. But, uh, as of now, uh, I can't see proving the sign.
No, can I just ask, I mean, again, if it's not the design or you, you think it looks great, it's just again, there is, there is no nineteen ten nouveau, um, sign.
Point of order, um, Mr. Rose, at this point, council is deliberating on its decision. And so it's not appropriate to, um, carry on a dialogue with them at this point. So I would respectfully request that you just give the council your, your respect and attention and let them carry on with their decision making process.
Understood.
Sure. The only thing I have to say is, you know, we receive a portion of gaming taxes to help fund the historic preservation product, projects. I don't know if this would withdraw from the, that withdraws from the National Historic Landmark District, uh, with this not being a historic sign. And I don't really see that we should risk that at all for a sign like this. I feel that, that helps our community. Usually, uh, receiving those funds, uh, something else we just voted on tonight on another house. It's going to help, uh, someone who's, so I don't, I don't agree with, uh, the, uh, significance of, uh, the, on the sign.
But so discussion, uh,
Mr. Mayor, by name, is there, is there time for public discussion?
No.
There's no public discussion allowed?
It's not required.
When is the time?
When it comes back through, um, uh, actual, um,
Yeah, this is not certificate of appropriate, this is not a public hearing. So there is no required public comment to entertain.
No sense. Steve, we got to carry on.
Oh, I understand. Thank you.
Okay. Well, I heard motion, uh, approved resolution twenty, twenty-three dash oh three.
Mayor and Council, in absence of a motion to approve a resolution, um, my recommendation is that you would direct the town attorney, city attorney to bring back a resolution consistent with your discussion, which would deny the, um, certificate of appropriateness, and I would bring that back to a subsequent meeting. So I think the motion would be to direct the city attorney to prepare a resolution to deny the certificate of appropriation and bring it to a subsequent meeting.
I'll let that motion.
I'll second.
Vote please.
Councilman Bowman?
Yes.
Councilman Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Ternary?
Yes.
Councilman Luthenland?
Yes.
Mayor Ashford?
Yes. Okay, General Adam C. Consider approval resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh four. Nominate Susan, welcome to position of second, all in due, his first presidential commission. Renee.
Um, hello, everybody, again, uh, I, I believe Susan Balcom is in the, um, council chambers with you. She has expressed an interest in becoming a member of our Historic Preservation Commission. And council has the letter, I do, would you like me to read it? To the public? Basic, I can't hear you, did you say yes?
You're perfect, Renee, we're all ready.
Okay. Well, I would like to, uh,
We lost you, Renee.
And, uh, nominated her for the station to counsel.
Hello, everyone. I'm Susan Balcom, I am applying to the position of alternate for the Historical Preservation Society.
Are you sure after all this you want to? Are you sure?
More reasons to, yes. Any questions concerning other?
Do you know much about the district or you've been up here at all?
I'm actually a Colorado native, I grew up in Lawrence Springs and I have been coming to Cripple Creek probably since the seventies. So, yeah, I remember it before gambling and now there is gambling, so.
And Susan, you know, living here in town?
I currently reside in the city limits, uh, will be moving outside of the city limits.
You moved from the Springs up to the area?
But I, yes, I
If not, that here through the resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh four. Uh, yes, I motion that we approve. Resolution number twenty twenty-three dash oh four to nominate Susan Balcom to the position of second alternate for the Historic Preservation Commission.
I'll second that.
Vote please.
Mayor Proton Ternary?
Yes.
Councilman Luthenland?
Yes.
Councilman Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Bowman?
Yes.
Mayor Ashford?
Thank you very much.
Love you, appreciate it. General D. Consider approval resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh five regarding updates to the personal handbook. Harold?
Good evening, again, Mayor Ashford, City Council. Colonel Socks, HR Director for the City of Cripple Creek. Um, I am requesting approval of resolution twenty twenty-three zero five, making updates to the City of Cripple Creek Personnel Handbook. I did provide a staff memo that outlines the, um, suggested changes. And the resolution is included in the packet. That resolution is a clean copy of the changes. And in the packet, uh, there's also the text that you can see that's right through. So you're able to see the exact changes that we are requesting. And I would be happy to answer any questions you have, um, how we need the changes that we're requesting approval on.
Uh, yes, I have two questions, quick questions. Does this apply to the council members?
No, our personnel handbook, um, you are not governors, you are our personnel handbook.
Yeah, there's reason I asked that. All right, and the second question, um, use of equipment vehicle, um, and I don't see under section nine, uh, uh, point zero five, use of equipment vehicle. Um, you don't mention anything about personal use.
That's a separate section of the personnel handbook, yes.
Right, thank you. Anything else? I heard approval of resolution twenty, twenty-three dash oh five.
All motion to, uh, through resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh five regarding updates to the personnel handbook. I'll second.
Vote please.
Councilman Luthenland?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Ternary?
Yes.
Councilman Bowman?
Yes.
Councilman Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Ashford?
Yeah.
Thank you.
General D. Consider approval of resolution twenty, twenty-three dash oh six according to energy and mineral impact assistance. Fund grant application from DOLA, right?
Yes, Mayor and Council, thank you. This is, uh, the resolution would allow the city to apply for this, uh, energy mineral impact assistance grant through DOLA for fifty thousand dollars. Uh, the next item on your agenda is a professional services agreement with SGM. And to get them started, we wanted to apply for the grant. There is a fifteen, uh, fifty percent match with a DOLA grant. So we have money in the wastewater fund. We put in a hundred thousand dollars in the budget in case we had a a payment this year to make to the SRF fund for our utility grant that we've applied for. We're not going to have a payment this year, so we'd like to use fifty thousand of that to match this, uh, mineral energy impact fund grant through DOLA. When we actually submitted the grant, deadline was the third. So we already wrote the grant, we already submitted it, uh, it'll be down the road before it's even looked at by DOLA. But this is, the council would need to approve, submit a little grant. So if you don't approve the grant, we'll withdraw the, um, the application, but staff recommends approval. Questions?
Any question? The air motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh six. And I motion that we approve, council approves, uh, resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh six according in engine minimal impact assistance fund grant application from DOLA.
I'll second.
Vote please.
Councilman Bowman?
Yes.
Councilman Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Ternary?
Yes.
Councilman Luthenland?
Yes.
Mayor Ashford?
Yeah. Thank you.
Next one, thank you very much. Consider approval authorized, to authorize staff to advertise for contractors.
The one before that, Mayor. Yes.
Yeah. Consider approval for professional service agreement with SGM for engineering services for wastewater treatment plant upgrades through preliminary designs.
Yes, sir, council will remember, we went out for RFQs for an engineering firm for the wastewater treatment plant. And the reason for that is we have been operating under an administrative permit since, uh, twenty nineteen, our permit expired. The, the state is currently reviewing the, uh, Cripple Creek. We should have that information submitted sometime this year. We expect the state will come to us next year with a permit that will have more restrictions than the current plant can treat. So to get kind of ahead of that, we went out for RFQs. The mayor, Mayor Protim and four staff members reviewed the RFQs. We brought that to you last time. We recommended SGM in for the engineering services and council authorized that. So in your packet is the agreement with SGM for the engineering on the wastewater treatment plant. And that's probably going to be over a two to three year period. This is to get us through preliminary design. You have to have preliminary design before you can go to the SRF fund or to USDA asking for grant loans. It'll give us a better idea of what that cost is going to be to, to meet the state permit. So this agreement is a not to exceed of two hundred thousand. The fifty thousand that are sufficient for the grant that you approved earlier will give us a hundred thousand of the two hundred and get them started this year. Talking to SGM, they think if they spend any money at all this year, it probably wouldn't exceed fifty thousand. But there's no reason for us to put up our fifty if we can match DOLA for fifty. So we're going down that road to try to get half the money this year. We'll be going back to DOLA for the rest of it next year, but right now this is just to get this, them started on our, uh, looking at the wastewater treatment. You get to get all this in place right now before the grant comes around. Be ready to go. You have to have preliminary engineering done before you could ever approach USDA or the state revolving fund. So this gets us to preliminary design. We can't get to preliminary design until we hear from the state on what our permit is actually going to have in it. We have a pretty good idea, Victor just went through the same thing. They've got an eight million dollar design on a wastewater treatment plant and they're on the same creek we're on. I'm not saying that's our, what we're up for, we don't know until they give us our permit, we don't know what our farmers will do. But this gets us started looking at it.
Yeah, your motion to consider approval professional service agreement with SGM for engineering services for wastewater treatment plant, definitely through preliminary design.
My motion that we approve the professional service agreement with SGM.
I'll second that.
Vote please.
Mayor Proton Ternary?
Yes.
Councilman Luthenland?
Yes.
Councilman Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Bowman?
Yes.
Mayor Ashford?
Yeah.
All right, General Adam G. Consider approval to authorize staff to advertise for contractors, services, RFP for mill overlay project. Steve?
Good evening, Councilman Mayor, Steve DeCamel, Public Works Director. In front of you, you've got one sheet that hides your footages and what roads. The other one with the maps. So on the map, the lines that are in red are a curve to curve mill overlay. They're backing up, we just need to re surface the whole thing. The ones in yellow, we're going to mill about three feet along each curve and then overlay the rest. There's saveable that way. I actually had, um, Nick come up, look at all these roads. These are his recommendations on how to fix them. So I get help. Somebody professional come up and help him with this. Tell one that road was so bad. Down about twelve hundred feet, there was a seam by that big tree. We moved and replaced everything, the cowl guard down to that seam. We built the base underneath. And then we gave it the five inches of asphalt. These others, the overlay on the red is a two inch overlay. The yellow is a two inch overlay, that's a five inch mat. And the one down on Fourth Street is a mill of four inches. We'll roll it, looking for any soft plucks, except it's not going to break that down there. And if we have any soft plucks, get them out, get them and then relay it with a orange mat. And the way this is being hit out, three options. Option one is Bennett, A to B. B Street from Bennett to William. Option two is, is that and tell one, and then third option is all of it. So I'm here asking for your permission to get this in the paper and get it. See what our bids coming on. Get in on the bids, well, we'll get them.
So just for clarification, so everybody knows, Steve, it's, it'd be from jail museum to the top of Bennett. And then from there, past the school, and then out teller one. And then there's a sort of short section of Porch Street.
Lower Fourth Street of Porch Street.
Okay.
And these are areas that grant will work on all the sewer water. Don't affect it.
Good idea. I, I prefer that all would be done by one company.
Yes.
Okay. And, uh, well, the thing I want to mention, though, we're looking at what, half million dollars? Uh, still out, skittered. Uh, what I wanted to say to the public out here, half million buys basically nothing. You know, when you have to, uh, so if you wonder why a lot of these streets are not getting paid, uh, when you have to mill them and so on and so forth, it drives your costs through the roof. Uh, but, uh, again, um, you, you, you can't believe what it costs to pave a street.
And get, get an outfit to come up here.
Absolutely.
And stuff.
Yeah, we didn't have a bid last year, no one bid on paving our streets, not one company. Yeah, we took the money, we didn't bid out last year and add it to this year's budget, which gives us five hundred thousand.
Yes.
Hopefully, we can track the paving company to come up here, give us a bid, reasonable bid and get these projects done.
I hope so.
Okay, here, consider approval authorized staff to advertise contractors, services, RFP for mill and overlay project. All, um, council should approve, uh,
I'll, um, council should approve, uh, uh, to authorize staff to advertise for contracted services. R F P for a mill and a load of project.
I'll second.
Vote please.
Councilman Lederwitz?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Teneri?
Yes.
Councilman Bowman?
Yes.
Councilman Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Ashford?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mayor Ashford?
May I make a motion that we take a brief pause for the cause?
Sure. We'll have a little. A pause here now in the, in the meeting, proceed. Everybody have a little rest, so. In minutes, we'll be back.